Good evening. I am calling to order the June 11th, 2024 Fountain City Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Protemrick?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Applegate?
Here.
Councilmember Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Present.
I have seven members present.
Thank you very much. That takes us on to item 4.1, Presentations. There are none tonight. Item 4.2, Board Commission and Committee Appointments. There are none tonight. Item 5, Correspondence Comments and Ex officio Reports. Mr. Traynor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have two items I wanted to share briefly. I want to report out on the day of service that we had two Fridays ago was a great event. We had a lot of great projects that got done for our Parks Department, had somewhere between 150 and 160 total participants. That includes all the city employees who helped spearhead some of those projects. So I thought it was a great project or a great overall event. And we're connecting up with county parks to see if they'll have some projects to add on for us next year. So that'll be a fun one. Also wanted to mention, there's a lot of folks who knew Doris Fulkerson when she worked for the city. She spent several decades here, excuse me, in various capacities, the last of which was our court administrator. She passed away in May, and her husband, actually Tom, who a lot of us knew as well, passed away in October. And they're actually going to be having a joint memorial service for them, for those folks who are interested in attending that, on July 6, between noon and 2:00 at Memorial Gardens up in Carros Springs. But she was sort of an iconic member of the staff and of our community for a long time. And so just want to make sure that we let people know about that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Troy?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to talk about one thing with you all. I've received a little bit of interest from council regarding for drug use. That could include like the restriction of safe injection site or needle exchange programs. And I think the interest being in protecting some areas of our community. And so I received that interest and wanted the council to have an opportunity to discuss if you'd like that to be on a future agenda with sort of the caveat of informing you all that the city of Pueblo recently got sued for something like that by the ECLU. Now, it's a little bit different. They have some of those existing services in Pueblo. And so, to my knowledge, we don't have any of those existing services. So the risk is a little bit different. But and so it would be maybe difficult for anyone to claim standing because we're not kicking anybody out. But that was an extra wrinkle that I wanted to bring forth to the council. And with that information, you know, if you all wanted to direct me to draft something up regarding that, I'd be happy to. But maybe we can, I just wanted to put that out there. And maybe the council wants to make a request at that portion of the agenda when you all get there. But I wanted to put that out there before you all got to that portion of the agenda. So happy to discuss. But I wanted to explain that to you all. But that's all that I had for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Good to see everybody. Just a couple of really quick things. One, there'll be an email coming to you guys. I know we haven't had a conversation about Fire Station 4 in a number of weeks. We've been doing some internal research and still working on that project. But there'll be an email forthcoming very soon with some formalized details of where we're at on that project and forging a path forward, hopefully. So the other thing I was going to mention, I was prepared to report tonight that the fire department was officially fully staffed, and we were.
For five minutes?
Six days.
Six days.
And Saturday, we had a resignation. Actually, the firefighter paramedic that we had hired on Monday resigned on Saturday. He just wasn't sure. He wanted to stay in the fire service and is pursuing other career options. A young kid, he was going to be a good fit, we thought, decided he wanted to do something else. So we were fully staffed, and now we're back to short one. So but we do have another candidate in the pipeline from our last hiring process. So those phone calls are being made right now. So I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Good to see you all. Just a couple of things. Obviously, the weekend's events are going to show us that kids are out of school and crime is going to be on the upswing, apparently. So I'm putting it out publicly to make sure that, and we'll get some social media stuff going on this, we need to lock our cars, keep all of our valuables inside the houses. If your cars are going to be outside, please take all your valuables out of the vehicles. We had a couple of firearms stolen in the last rash of break-ins. We don't like to see that ever. The good news is, is we're making some progress on those cases for the Cumberland Green residents. I'll be attending their HOA board meeting next Monday at the library. So we're going to talk about some stuff during that meeting. Second thing I want to talk about is the upcoming fireworks. The police department is obviously aware of how things went last year. We're asking the community to respect and honor the ordinance that's in place. And we'll be enforcing that as best we can with the resources we have. I'm not necessarily going to be dedicating extra resources just for the fireworks, but we're going to have plenty of officers on duty during the holidays. So, you know, we're just asking for some voluntary compliance that was better than last year because last year wasn't fantastic. And last, I wanted to give kudos to the fire department. We had a pretty substantial fire in my neighborhood where I live. And not only the Fountain Fire Department, but fire departments from all over the place were there in force. And that fire was knocked down super quick. Could have been tragic because there was many houses around it, but they got it down and knocked out. And it was handled very quickly. So I just want to thank fire chief for that. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on that side of the room? Go ahead.
Nothing for me.
I just wanted to give a quick update from the city prosecutor's office. For some of our juvenile cases, we've added a new tool in our toolbox, which is Pike's Peak Restorative Justice Program. We are now partnering with them, not for all of our cases, but for the ones that we kind of identify that that might be a good option for them. And so just kind of work with others and practice making harms correct, which is kind of a weakness in our criminal justice system sometimes. So we have partnered with that, and we're especially selecting cases to go through that process now.
That's great. Thank you. Because we have a lot of great specialty courts in El Paso County, and we need to use them when it's appropriate. So we have the Veterans Court and the Teen Court and different things. So thank you for reaching out to that. Okay, Councilmember Rick?
Just a shout out to both the police department and the fire department. You've had a rough couple of weeks, a lot of activity going on, a lot of mutual aid required to get out there. So just thanks for all your hard work. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Estes?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, just a quick reminder, if anybody's looking to have any volunteer opportunities to serve in the city in any capacity, JustServe.org is a great website to go to if you're looking to help out in any way. And just kind of wanted to mention that since Scott talked about our service project, you know, there's many opportunities to serve. And a lot of these nonprofits need our helping hand. So just kind of look at that as you're going out and about. And if you need an opportunity to serve, go ahead and do that. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hersberg?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you. We had National Transit Week a couple of weeks ago or last month, and I forgot to mention that. And I would just like to thank all of those who get us to and from work and to doctor's appointments. You know, they are, when they're not available, then we are kind of stuck, right? So please, when you get on the bus, please say appreciation to our transit drivers. They work really hard to get us where we need to be. I rode the bus for many years, so I know the importance of those people getting, you know, getting to work and making sure that we get where we need to be. So just want to give a shout out to our transit department. Father's Day is coming up. We got a lot of men in the room, so I want to say Happy Father's Day to you guys, whether you're a father or not, a grandfather, or so, you know, bonus father, Happy Father's Day to everyone. There is a Renters' Right 101 at the Ruth Holly Library on Thursday, June 13, 2024, from 5:00 to 6:45. And this is going to talk about recent Colorado legislation on housing matters. And they will have other resources. So if you'd like to pre-register, that would be the best thing if you cannot attend. If you pre-register, they'll send you the slides and a copy of the recording. And you can go on CONO, C-O-N-O, Building Neighborhood Networks. And it's also on their Facebook page. So you can register for that. Juneteenth is a federal holiday. It's coming up. There's a lot of activities going on at America the Beautiful Park. And I want to give a shout out to those who are having events. I went to Colorado Springs City Council this morning and got to witness, you know, the collaboration of a lot of organizations that's going to be putting on events. So they're starting on Friday, and they're all online. So please check those out. The mother of Juneteenth was here a couple of weeks ago, and she was at Pike's Peak Community College. And then she came to District 2. And Colorado Springs had a lot of the children from District 2 in the audience, and that was great to see. I'm really saddened to hear that, you know, looking at the reports from our chief, that we're having our kids that are 12-year-old being arrested for a lot of things that are going on. We got to do stuff to keep our kids busy. There are a lot of camps. You know, let's do something to keep our kids busy. We have a great program here in Fountain that they can sign up on. So let's keep our kids busy and out of trouble. The last thing is that ballots are in the mail. And whether there's one person or five people, please fill out your ballot and let's vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we got a drop box right over by PD. And we have the Voters' Service Center that's opening down here. Do you know when that's opening, Joanie?
They will be open the 24th and 25th.
Your mic's not on.
Sorry, the 24th and the 25th.
Okay, so just those couple of days for voting right across the street here at the utilities. Okay. All righty. So everybody's been out doing a lot of stuff, and that's great. CML, we had an event for our district up in Monument that Councilmember Duncan and I went to, and I sent those notes to the council members, just kind of what's going on. Had a great pancake breakfast, and chief was there out at Hanover. Amazing what you can find to eat when you can't eat pancakes, right? And they had good eggs and bacon. And if you want a good breakfast, they do it once a month, and it's like really inexpensive. And but a great turnout for the community. You were standing in line, what, 30, 40 minutes to get breakfast because so many people showed up? So that was really great. And Fountain Valley Senior Center picnic today. They picked a great day. They probably had over 100 people there, I would say, easily. And just enjoying the day out at our Fountain Creek Regional Park. And they had fried chicken and watermelon and all sorts of good stuff. So that was fun to go hang out with the seniors today. So lots of good stuff going on. So that takes us to Public to Be Heard, item number six. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. I do only have one card. If there was anyone else who wanted to speak tonight, please take a moment and go back and fill out the white card real quick. And then pass it up to the table over here, and they will get that over to me. Could I get a Kleenex talking about allergies? It is getting to me up here. So we were sitting here talking about everything. Just one is fine, but thank you very much. All righty. So we have Bobby V. Hill from Post 6461.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just an update about some of the events that are going on at the Post and in the community. We've got, if you like painting with a twist, we've got Painting with a Twist on Saturday. There's still time to sign up for it. It's at 1:00. It's only a couple hours long. The sign up's connected to the Facebook page. It seems easier to collect money or to do the finances that way. Also, on the 15th, Book Archive and VFW Post 101 are doing a presentation for symbolism of the poppy, and that's through Book Archive. We've got a, we're trying to do a flag retirement with the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. I know they changed their name, and I didn't write that down, so I apologize. And the Young Marines on the 22nd at 9:00 a.m. will do a flag retirement ceremony, and then we'll lead into a little barbecue, some hotdogs and hamburgers, as usual.
What date was that?
I'm sorry. That is the 22nd, June 22nd. Then we will also have, we do a little, Auxiliary does a meet and greet, little treats for Grandy Manor once a month, and that's coming up on the 20th at 9:00 a.m. We just go and visit and socialize with them. And then we've got trivia also on the 20th at 6:00 p.m. It's only a couple hours long. It's pretty mild and entertaining. I'm not the best trivia person. I found that out. Other than that, our regular bingo, I'm your caller for the next two weeks, on Wednesday nights at 6:00 p.m., and breakfast on Sunday mornings. So, thank you.
Thank you. You, do you still have the box out front where if someone wanted to bring a flag over because they couldn't come, they can bring it almost any time?
Yes, ma'am. It's right on the left-hand side of the Post. When you walk up, it's just right on the left-hand side. If the door or if the drawer is full, let us know, and we can come collect it from you.
Okay. And when you say the door, you mean the one that's on the south end of the building, right?
Uh, yes.
Kind of next to Simmons?
Yes, facing west.
Yeah.
And the, when I say the door, it's the door to the drop box. If it's getting full, it gets a little funny, so again, yeah, just call us, and we'll come get it from you.
Okay, great. Yeah, it's just a great resource for people that, it's amazing. You tell it and tell it and tell it, and then you find somebody who doesn't know, so.
I didn't know myself for quite a while, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming by. Thank you. All right, that takes us on to item seven, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from his consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. I have one item on here, item 7A, Approval of the May 29th, 2024 City Council Minutes. What would council like to do with that? Councilmember, oh, let's see. Applegate?
Move to approve the minutes for May 29th, City Council meeting.
Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, we were having trouble finding the right button for the screen up here, so we're just kind of chuckling.
He's got too many buttons.
We kept pushing. Sorry. Okay, we got it. We finally found it. Okay, item 9B, Request for City Sponsorship for the 2024 Community Event. Ms. Cornille?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have received a request from Thunder in the Valley for city sponsorship of in-kind services for their event happening on July 12th and 13th in Medcalf Park for their annual car show. City staff did met with a representative on June 6th and have confirmed that they have staffing available to cover their request for this event, and we do have a representative with us here this evening.
Hello, my name is Sherri German. I am the Treasurer of Thunder in the Valley, and Kelly German is here also with me. He's the president of Thunder in the Valley. I feel like I'm nervous more than I am like in an interview or anything. Thunder in the Valley has been around for a long time. We have a car show and a cruise down at Medcalf Park. It used to be right out here in front. The only reason I told you kind of about the history is because this year is our 20th anniversary, and so we're going to try to make it big as possible. We donate lots of money to Fountain Valley places. Last year, we donated 2,500 to the Fountain Police Department and 2,500 to the Fountain Fire Department, 2,000 to the Fountain Valley Senior Center, and 1,500 to Tim Tebow's Night to Shine, and $500 to the Peyton High School Cheerleading Team. We basically do everything that we can to keep the younger kids into cars. The generations nowadays, they don't really get into the car scene as much, so we're, that's what we try to do, is we try to keep them involved. Is there any questions for me?
Councilmember Rick?
Joanie, this was July 20th, is that correct?
July 12th and 13th is the show.
Okay. My mistake. I apologize. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, the 12th is the cruise, and we start about 4:00. The Police Department escort us down to PPIR. We go around PPIR for about a half hour or so, and then we come back to the park itself and have like a barbecue, and they look at the cars that are there. There's not very many cars that are there that night, probably 40, 50. And then Saturday is the actual show, and there'll be anywhere between 200 to 250. I think the most we've had is 264, I think, in that park, and that was a lot. But other than that, if you, I know that was directed at Joanie, but I had the answer.
Thank you. Councilmember Duncan?
I would just like to say thank you for all that you do for the community and all the support, you know, the monetary is not just what you do, so thank you for all that.
Absolutely.
And I brought my cup to show of support.
Woo, woo! Absolutely. We love doing it.
Mine bit the dust a couple of weeks ago. Lanced it a long time, yep. All right, I just have two questions. Number one, I do disagree with something on your application where it says you're not going to have any amplified sound except for announcements. You do do the whole reason you're there, which is the Thunder in the Valley.
Oh, you're right.
You know, the cars go.
Yeah, yeah.
Just teasing you.
The mayor comes out, and she votes for her favorite car, and she gets to give out the trophy.
Yep, that's fun.
Screen times.
Yep.
Police Department did the same thing, Fire Department. Yep.
Yep. And, yeah, if you have to pick about 10, because there's so many awards, it's really, really cool to see people who have never gotten awards before get, you know, get an award.
Yeah, we try to split it up to where not all, the same person gets an award.
Yeah. And then I do have one thing, and this is just kind of asking all events that are coming in this year, if you could get your exhibitors and your vendors to bring their own trash bags and be really helping us out with the trash. It seems like a lot of years, we get a bit of big events out there, and we get a couple of people that put pizza boxes in it, and then the whole trash can's full. So, if everybody just brings a trash bag with them, is responsible for their own trash, it just really, really helps us out a lot as a city, not to have the park people coming there all day long.
Yes, ma'am. We will, I'll have the vendor liaison, I guess, pass out an email to all the vendors and have them bring their own trash can.
They can still leave the trash bag next to the trash can, right?
But don't fill it up with big items.
Yeah, because we want people that are buying their food to have a place to dispose of it, right?
Yes, correct.
So, yeah, that would really be helpful. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
But otherwise, okay. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, I just want to second what Councilwoman Duncan said. We appreciate you holding this event, and we really do enjoy it every year that it happens. I'm going to bring my grandson. He's eight, and he's into cars now. He'll appreciate that. He's not big on the sounds, but I'll just bring some earplugs. He'll be all right. But yeah, we appreciate everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, they only do it at a certain time. They don't do it during the whole thing.
I'm not going to tell him. He's already freaking out about it. But we'll be okay.
That's funny. And it's guaranteed to be hot that day. Bring your water bottles is just like a given, right?
From your words or from your lips to his ears.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Councilmember Estes?
I just want to say, join in and say thank you. I know the Senior Center greatly appreciated the check last year, because every little dime counts for them, so we really appreciated it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, everybody appreciates the donations, yes. Thank you very much. All righty, with that, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Duncan?
So, I move to approve the, and the request for Thunder in the Valley Car Show.
Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further deliberation? Councilmember Duncan, your mic is on. Did you, okay, I just didn't want to cut you off yet, something to say. All right. Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. And I remember when this event, we would go to Coke's Diner for dinner, and we outgrew that years ago.
Yes.
So, it's great to see it at the park, and anybody can go to the dinner, even if you don't have a car. You can head on over there and get a good dinner.
Yes, you can.
So, yeah.
Thank you very much, all of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, that takes us on to item 9C, Resolution 24-022, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado, authorizing a covenant for the provision of water outside the city limits of Fountain for 632 West Alabama Avenue. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council and the public. So, the item for you tonight is seeking approval of a covenant. This is to allow the sale of water to a home that is currently existing but situated outside of the city limits. This property is in El Paso County, just west of the Fountain Middle School, between the creek and the neighborhood that surrounds the middle school. The property currently has one house and one barn on it. Thank you. Could you go to the next slide, please? So, this is just a visual of the area to show where this property lies. It is the property highlighted with the light blue color on the south side of this exhibit. It lies between Fountain Creek and the middle school. As I noted, it is in El Paso County. One distinction about this property is that it does currently receive City of Fountain water despite not having its own water account or meter on the property. It is one of several properties owned by the same family. Some of those properties are just to the north of it. Some of them are in the city. Some of them are outside of the city. All of those properties are served through two different water service lines with meters and accounts that are in the city. After the water goes through that meter, it is dispersed through a branched array of pipes that span property lines, crossing multiple buildings, multiple structures. Quite honestly, it's a little bit of a tangled mess out there of where the water goes to. All we know is that the water is properly metered so that every drop used across those multiple properties is measured by the city and build. That type of setup is no longer compliant with Utilities Code and Water Regulations. However, this type of setup has been allowed to remain grandfathered in because it predates our codes and because all of the water is being used on properties owned by the same family, so we have a responsible party to go to if there is an issue out there. The reason this is coming to you now, however, is that this specific property on the south end here, 632 West Alabama, is undergoing foreclosure proceedings right now, so that property in the near future will be transferred out of the family's name to a new owner. That does trigger a provision within the water regulations that the property must be disconnected from city water and otherwise establish its own standalone water connection with its own water account if it wishes to remain receiving city water. Next slide, please. So, this is just a quick excerpt of our water regulations. I won't have you read it, but what it effectively says is that the city will not serve water to customers outside of city limits unless expressly approved by City Council, and council has the right to impose any conditions it sees fit on that service of water. As I noted, the upcoming foreclosure is going to force that property to change hands. That does force us to disconnect it from the current system and make it require its own connection. Because this property is outside of city limits, that connection would require explicit approval by City Council. One other item not on here that I would like to note, and a question has been brought up, very good question, is why doesn't the city just seek to annex this property since it's outside the city limits? When this issue first came to our attention, it was brought up by the owner just a few months ago when that foreclosure was proceeding. They wanted to be proactive and work with the city. We met internally as staff amongst the planning, the planning department, the City Attorney's Office and Utilities to contemplate, is it worth pursuing or pushing annexation on this? We determined for really two reasons, that trying to push annexation at this time was not really the ideal path to go. Firstly, there's a time crunch on this. This, or this foreclosure is moving forward, whether or not the city has something in place that will force our hand to disconnect the property. We did not believe that we could have anything worked out on a lengthy annexation process in time for that. That would result in somebody owning the property without having any water to it for an indeterminate amount of time. We decided that pushing a covenant or an agreement for the property was the quickest way to have something in place so that when that property is transferred, there is a means to keep water to it. Secondly, when we met internally and discussed, there are some broad concerns that go beyond the scope of this item as to whether the city would inherit any financial or other responsibilities with that land and really the creek property and the creek erosion that comes with those properties in and around it. We felt that was not something that really we should tie to this provision for service, that maybe something council wishes to address at a future time with the owners or the future owners, but we felt that because of those looming concerns, that it was not worth or was not ideal to try and force the annexation on this property through this process. Next slide, please. So, what this resolution does, if council chooses to act on it, is that it approves a covenant on the property. This covenant would expressly give them permission to connect to the City of Fountain's water system. It would run with the land, recorded with the title documents on the property, meaning it would be binding to all future owners of the property. It would establish general conditions for them to receive water. Most of those are standard conditions. There's a payment of a tap fee, just like any new home that wishes to connect to the system. The owner is responsible for the costs of installing the physical pipe to connect to the city. The one unique thing about this is that because this property is outside of the city, it is currently our policy that any customers who receive water outside of the city, of which we have a small handful right now, are billed their water use at twice the city's standard rate. That is a precedent that we have with the handful of existing out-of-city customers that are in the county. That is something we would apply to this property. We are working to have that codified in an upcoming Utilities Code revision, but right now, it is the policy of the city that is applied to existing properties. We would stipulate that there are no additional connections made from this, meaning they can't build a second house on the property because it's not in the city. We don't have the right to control what the land use is. However, we do have the right to ensure that this, this doesn't become another daisy chain system that is not compliant with our codes and regs, just like the current system. So, this connection would only serve that one single house on the property. And then, lastly, these customers would be subject to all the normal restrictions and regulations that apply to all City of Fountain water utility customers, disconnects, nonpays, things like that. They would be treated just like any other customer. And last slide, please. And so, I just want to close with some staff recommendations. We have assessed what the impact to the water utility, water capacity would be, since that's a very hot-button item for us right now that's dictating a lot of development and redevelopment. Because this property already receives water from the City of Fountain, whether that water goes through a neighboring property's meter or a new dedicated meter directly for this house, it will not increase the water demand on our system, so that is kind of the first major check that we assess.[1768.33] So it will not be an increased demand or an adverse impact to the water utility. Secondly, we checked to verify that the existing account, that of the neighboring property they get water through, is in good standing with the city. So if these folks move over to their own new account, nobody is being let off the hook for unpaid bills or any kind of delinquency on an account. And so with those in mind, staff would make the recommendation that city council approve this resolution allowing this service. But I would open it up to any questions from council.
Councilmember Rick.
Mr. Johnson, as I understand it, this water is already hooked up and in a daisy chain, and they're getting it now. How do we legally require somebody outside the city limits to disconnect from the daisy chain? Can, it, can we do that, is, would be my question?
I, I can speak to that if, if it helps. So really, the mechanism to do this would be that the existing account, that of the neighboring property, the one that is already receiving the water meter, they would be in non-compliance, serving another property under another owner. Their water would be going to somebody else. Our mechanism effectively would be to shut their water off because they are not compliant with the utilities code. Because it is the same family, the same users of these, they do not want that. So they have proactively reached out to the city asking how they can get service standalone for this property so that their, their entire property remains compliant.
Okay, so they're, they're willing to disconnect?
Yes, sir. Yes, this has been coordinated in a collaborative manner with all of these owners out here. They've been working with the city very proactively.
Okay, I just didn't want a long legal battle trying to fix this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hinton.
Yeah, Taylor, I just want to make sure that I heard you right, and I want to make sure that the citizens heard you right, that this does not cause any existing issues, issues or concerns for our current rate payers that we have that are on water taps in the City of Fountain. Because I hear it a lot, we talk about there's a water surge, right? Now we're talking about maybe extending some rights to people that are outside the city. So I just want to make sure that that's clear and understand for our residents that we've done our due diligence, and it sounds like you have, that we are not overextending ourselves.
That is absolutely correct. So all of the water currently in the plumbing in that house is already metered through a city meter. All this move is effectively doing is changing the meter that water is running through. It's not adding more water coming through a pipe. It's just changing the point where that water is measured.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilmember Applegate.
Do we expect their usage to go up significantly? Are they going to stay about the average?
We expect it to stay about the average. We don't have full control over what they do on the property, and that's why we put the stipulation that the service can only go to that existing structure. They can't build a second house or anything else and start daisy chaining it. That would be grounds for disconnecting them from city water per our code.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other comments from anybody on the council? So you said they would be subject to all our restrictions. So if we did a water conservation where people required odd-even days, certain hours or something, they would be on those restrictions also?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. ADUs is a big thing, and I know ADUs and water is a big thing for us. And we don't allow daisy chaining. Can you explain daisy chaining? We keep referring to it, and I want to make sure everybody understands what we're talking about, right?
So daisy chaining is effectively where you have a service line enter the property. It may run to the primary house, we'll call it. Instead of creating a separate standalone connection, if they built a secondary house or a mother-in-law suite or something else on the property, all they would do is effectively go into that main house, hook onto the plumbing, rather than another pipe out from the plumbing into the yard and to the second structure. There would be no new connection to the city water system, but they would be having two buildings fed off the same water service line. And there are a lot of varieties of how that shows up when we discover these types of arrangements and layouts. But it's effectively one service line that fans out to multiple structures or properties.
And, and if, tell me, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we don't allow daisy chaining to a separate residential structure. Is that correct?
That is current city policy. That is one thing that is going to be codified with the proposed utilities codes that you should see later this year. We will be attempting to codify that so that any, we are calling it an occupiable structure, I believe is the terminology. Anything that somebody could live out of per code would need its own separate connection. We've had lots of tricky legal situations in the past where a property has daisy chained connections. People think that they are a City of Fountain customer despite their water being billed through the next door property, things like that, that really cause a lot of headaches for us. And so it is cleaner, from a legal perspective, to have each habitable structure have its own dedicated service line so that we don't get in the middle of tenant disputes and other things like that.
Okay, so, so they wouldn't be allowed to subdivide this and put other?
They, from a land use perspective, they may, because they are in the county, they're subject to land use. But per our water code, if they tried to do that, we would have to disconnect them if they proceeded to move forward with that. That would be our grounds for holding them to our restrictions.
Scott, did you have something to say? Oh, it looked like you were reaching for your mic. Okay. Councilmember Duncan?
The question I have, I should have called you before because it was on my list. But so we're incurring the fees to connect them, to do this connection, right?
No, ma'am, there, there is no cost to the city for this. They will pay a normal connection fee, just like any new home that's built in the city. They, they will be required to pay that fee. That's just the normal impact fee. Recouping the city for the water rights we've purchased and the, our cost to lay all the water mains to the property. They will pay that fee. They will also be on the hook for hiring a contractor to run that pipe to the house. The, the city will not be waiving or covering any fees for this property. It will be treated just like a standard new home connection.
Okay, so, and, and I don't know anything about disclose, you know, having the house under, but if they move out of the house and they don't pay the water bill, can we attach that to the, the property so it will be paid through the bank? Is, is that how that goes?
I do not know if there's any restriction on placing a lien on the property, whether or not it's in the county or the city. I'm, I'm not sure if that adds any complexity to that. Troy, am I able to speak to it?
No, it, it shouldn't. Because they, because they're agreeing to comply with our code, we would still have the right to place a lien if, if they didn't pay. Similar to any other, any other customer.
So when we disconnect, they move out, disconnect, and the water's still running. So who's responsible for the, the bill while they're in foreclosure?
Until a new connection is made, the existing house that is current, the water's currently being run through, the, the neighboring property is paying the bill for anything used in this separate house down the road here.
But the, but the existing water account is in good standing as we sit today. So they don't owe any money currently.
Okay, thank you.
So you need, Councilmember Hinton, your line is still on?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So this might just be a safety question, but it's a safety question. Does that have any effect on like the fire hydr, pressure in that area? As far as, like, would that affect that?
A, a single residential service connection should not have any adverse effect on the, the pressure and the flow available for a fire hydrant, no.
I appreciate you, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, because the amount of water being used essentially is not going to change. It's just how it gets to this particular house is what's changing.
Correct, and the house's water use is so miniscule that really you'd have to have a fully cut pipe to have any even slight impact on the water system.
Okay, okay, alrighty. So, and you need the motion to say authorizing it for the, and to make sure, how do we make sure these provisions are on the motion?
Those provisions are all within the covenant. So really, the motion is just to authorize and approve this covenant to be executed by the state.
I just wanted to make sure we got it, we got it done right, so, okay. All right, is there any questions? I don't see more lights on from council. So are there any, I'm going to turn it, are there any questions from the audience? If so, please come down to the microphone and state your name and, and ask your question, please.
Connie Weisenhent. My only question is, the only reason why this is a concern is because it was under a grandfather law. Now it's gone into foreclosure, so everything has to be brought up to date. Had it not gone into foreclosure and it was under the grandfather clause, it would remain the same, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Aren't they also selling off this piece of property to someone else? So it's not even going to be owned by the same people who are in this daisy chain problem over there?
That is correct, and that is what is triggering this.
They're subdividing the property.
It's not a subdivision, they have separate parcels out there. The, the family is on five or six different parcels. But it, it is the fact that our utility regulations prohibit one service line from serving a property that is being split to multiple owners or a complex that is being owned by multiple.
Is they're selling off this property?
Yes, it is leaving the family effectively. And so that puts us in a position where if we had to shut off this property, somebody else completely unrelated to them would have a grievance of some sort. Whether or not there's legal merit to that, we don't want to stray into that. We'd rather just preempt this.
Right, okay. Any other questions from anyone in the audience? Mr. A, RC, please come down and state your name for the record.
Steve.
And, oh, there.
Wait, there you go.
There you go.
Thank you. Steve RC, I just, it wasn't clear on one part of it, and that was so presently, because it looked on the map like it was a fairly large parcel. Is the new, do we know anything about the new owner's intent? Because water usage had been brought up quite a bit. Of are they going to subdivide? Are they going to build apartments there at some point? Is there any plan in the future for that? Because that would add to the, to the water usage significantly, correct?
Correct. We, we have no indication of who the future owner might be or what their intent is. However, we tried to prevent that future, the risk there by reserving the right to disconnect it if they attempt to extend this connection to other buildings that they may put on the property. So we are very clearly in this covenant stated that they may receive water served from the City of Fountain, provided that water is only for the one existing house right there. So if they attempt to extend it or do a daisy chain or anything, we would step in and say, we will shut your water off if you do that.
Okay, and if they tried to do a business there, that would require a different sized tap, I assume?
It would depend on what the business is, but it would have to be run out of the house if they were trying to do something. We would not allow them to connect to another structure they built.
All right, okay. Councilmember Estes.
And additional structure, does that include like a barn or anything like that?
I, I think the city would probably apply it in that way due to how tight we are being with our water. I, I believe we have some discretion there, but I think we would apply it in that way. We would try to keep the water just in that residence.
Okay. Okay. Right. Okay. Are there any questions from anyone online about this item? Okay, if not, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Hinton.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 24-022 to authorize the water covenant allowing service to this out-of-city property.
Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, is there any further deliberation with council? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, that takes us on to item 9D, Resolution 24-023, a resolution to approve Second Amendment to ground site lease and access agreement between the City of Fountain and NCWPCS MPL 28 Year Sites Tower Holdings LLC. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor.
Did you get any more letters in there?
Yeah, I knew when I was writing that title that it would be fun to listen to you try to read, read that. But that is the correct title of the organization. Good evening, council. This is, this is an item that, that you may be familiar with. This is the, the cell tower on, on Fountain Mesa by the fire station, the, the gigantic one. And, and this, this negotiation, as, as many of you may know, has been ongoing for quite a while. And, and I'll, I'll just be frank with you all. I've attempted to try to improve, use this lease renewal to try to improve the look of that tower. And, and to, to tell you the short version, which is, it is impossible. Without tearing down that tower and, and rebuilding one from scratch would be, which would be a, a significant cost to that tower owner. And, and, and as I'm sure we can all know, we've all used that tower at some point, right? Like, that, that's the kind of the, the backbone of cell service in, in the City of Fountain is, is that tower. And so while I've, I've worked to try to improve the look of that tower, ultimately, you know, the, the, the technology specs don't, don't really allow for it. And so this is an extension of, of that lease to lease the ground space at the fire station for that tower. And what it really is would be, would be a 25% increase on the base rent and a 3% annual thereafter with a, with a $20,000 signing bonus, I think is what we called it. So we, we receive the $20,000 right now and, and the immediate base rent increase. The extension would go for essentially 20 years for five-year terms that would automatically renew. So, you know, to say it a different way, I mean, the, the council's under no obligation to extend this lease. You know, if, if we were to terminate the lease, they would have to take the tower down. They'd have to find a new place to put the tower. And they'd have to comply with our current regulations, particularly regarding stealth. And so, you know, that is a move that we, that we have available. What I've communicated to them on, on behalf of the council is that we would work with them for a transition so that we, that no impact, there would be no impacts to service. But that is sort of the nuclear option too that we have if, if we wanted to elect it. So, so those are sort of the two options. They're very different that the council has in front of them, the council has in front of you. And so with that, I'll, I'll stop for questions.
Okay, any questions for any council members? Councilmember Hinton.
Yeah, and just, just my opinion on this. It'd be hard to kind of go, go nuclear and kind of, you know, shut that down and try to remove that. It's already our, our cell service. I hear it a lot from residents. It's a little spotty at best for certain individuals who have certain carriers here in the City of Fountain. So I know that, you know, the object, it's, it's an eyesore. And I, I know that we're trying to, want to beautify that. But at this point, we've gotten dependent on it. And I'm not sure what else we could do moving forward. That's just my, my two cents on that.
Councilmember Rick?
So I feel shutting the tower down would definitely be a legitimate cause to brand us as not being business friendly. So I think we ought to go through with this.
Well, you also, how much more time do you want to spend on it? I mean, you spent a lot of time on this.
Yeah, yeah. Counsel, the, the, the term of this agreement ended in '22. And so I have been trying to negotiate this thing for two and a half years.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, to me, it memorizes me something like that emergency show in the 70s, you know, where they show the tower. But people who live up there tell me they, it doesn't bother them, they don't see it so anymore, so. Yeah, but any comments or anybody from in the audience? Anybody online? Okay. Well, I'm just curious, what is the advantage of doing the five-year renewal periods that automatically renew? I'm just curious.
It, it allows for just, just some, rather than doing like a 20-year term, it allows some, some breaks in there that if, if for some reason we wanted to terminate, we could do so with notice prior to the end of those five-year terms instead of just being married to the 20-year term.
Okay. So if they end up not servicing it and repairing it in a timely manner and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I think those, those things we could, we could terminate for cause, like for those types of things at any point. But, but if we just, we could elect at the end of, you know, a five-year term by providing advance notice. Otherwise, they would, they would expire automatically, or they would renew automatically.
There was a carrier a few years ago who, those of us who depended on that service in certain parts of town, we went almost six months before they repaired the tower. And you had to literally drive up the freeway to get your phone to work, so. Mr. Trainer?
Just as a general comment on technological agreements like this, and this would be, this would hold true for franchise agreement as well. You really want those re-opener opportunities because technology changes. And in five years or 10 years, we could be thinking something entirely different and, and the revenues may be entirely different. So it just allows you some reopeners during that 20-year period that, that you wouldn't necessarily have if you did one 20-year period.
Okay, thank you. All right. What would council like to do with this, then? Councilmember Duncan?
I move to approve Resolution 24-023.
Councilmember Estes? Second. Okay, we have a motion on the second on the floor. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Yeah, and that takes us on to item 9E, Resolution 24-024, a resolution to approve Kane Ranch Annexation Agreement Amendment between the City of Fountain and Corundum Properties V LLC. Is that V or five?
Good question. Good question, Mayor.
We got it read in both ways, okay.
Yeah, the, I guess I've only written it. I'm probably either is correct. Good evening, Mayor. correct. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is an item, um, I won't go too deep into the history. I'm sure you are all, are pretty aware of, um, the recent history of, of our, uh, interactions with Cane Ranch and, um, and so the, the most recent update is they've entered into, uh, an option lease agreement, uh, to, uh, with a, uh, a solar farm, to place a, uh, solar farm on the Cane Ranch. As all of you know, that the large piece of property, uh, east, uh, on the east side of the city. Um, and, and so, uh, this is really one of those situations where everybody involved, uh, can get a win. We don't have to provide, uh, water out there for a solar farm. Um, they get, um, some value from the property, um, during their proposed thirty-year term of a lease. Um, and, and so, but some of the language in there is after that thirty-year lease, after that agreement with the, the solar farm company, um, if, uh, we are unable to service the property, particularly with water, then, then we would allow, we would have to allow for disconnection. Um, and so that's the, that's the part that's important for them, that if in thirty years, um, we are unable to do that, that, that they would be free to move back into the county, um, to develop their property as they see fit there. Um, and so, uh, that's, that's the, the agreement that, that we've worked on. Um, and so that's the, the big picture of it, and I'll pause there for questions and discussion.
Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, so this question for you, Tyler, well, it's not even a question, it's probably a statement. I hope in thirty years that we have a, a solution to this, to this water. Um, I think that it's a, it's a win-win, and I, I agree with you. Uh, Troy?
Could you speak up a little bit?
I, I agree with you that it's a win-win, and I hope in thirty years that we will have a solution to our water problem. I, I think that we will. Um, and so, uh, I appreciate you bringing this up to council, thank you.
Uh, Troy, on page one of the Agreement Amendment, um, one, two, three, four, the fifth whereas down on the paragraph?
Mm-hmm.
At the end, it says, uh, forty years, and you're saying thirty.
Yeah, uh, good catch, Mayor. Um, so the, the base for their agreement with, um, I think it's Jewy, uh, is how you pronounce it, uh, is for thirty years, and there is an option to extend for ten.
Okay, that's, okay, that's where I was, because I read the forty years and thought it was.
Yes, that's, uh, and so really what, what I've been told is that the life cycle of the, of that solar equipment is thirty years, but if they can maintain it and extend that life of the solar equipment down the road, then they have the option to extend it by ten years. So, so, I, probably a better way of saying it would be thirty to forty years would be the, would be the lease term.
But their right to disconnect would be at thirty years?
Yeah, would, well, it would be following the, the termination of the agreement. So if, and the extension would be at the election of the solar company. So if the solar company elected not to renew, then the disconnection right would happen at thirty years. If they decided to renew, it would extend to forty, or up to forty.
Okay, and that is written for that?
Which, so, so, yeah, but it's, but it probably scattered throughout, so.
Okay.
The, the, the right, the disconnection rights are related to the termination of the solar lease.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's in there, so. You're, you're the attorney, you're the pro, right?
Well, yeah, I hope so.
Alright, okay, alrighty. Okay, is there any questions from anybody else on council? Any questions from anyone in the audience? Any questions from anyone online? No. So, oh, council, hang on just a second, were you?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, okay. Um, so this is a win-win because right now, if Cane Ranch were to decide to try to develop, um, homes, right? Um, looking kind of at Troy and, um, and Taylor, um, we really wouldn't have the processed water for them at this point, right?
That is correct. They, they would need to bring the infrastructure and the water resources to achieve the level of development build-out that they have in mind.
Right, so they're getting to use their land, getting to get income from it in the time that they may or may not be ready to develop it, and, and gives us time to see about, um, getting another water treatment plant down here and see if we would have that capacity by then, correct?
Correct.
Correct, and, and maybe the, the way that I would characterize it would be that, that they don't have to invest a significant amount in the infrastructure for us to try to be able to serve them. Um, and so that, I mean, that is a benefit. Um, and that's, that is sort of a, all things considered, a negative with this, this agreement too, is that, that we don't have their resources of development to contribute towards water infrastructure, because they, they won't have an, uh, uh, an interest in developing our infrastructure anymore because they won't need it. So that is, that is one negative. Um, but, I, I'm not sure that would have happened anyways.
Right, but we also, it's going to help us with our transportation infrastructure that we won't have hundreds and hundreds of cars in that area of town right now when we're not ready for them, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, okay, councilmember Rick, I think you, did you have another question?
So I, I didn't hear, what is the residual financial kind of benefit that the city gets from, from this, of the, of that solar farm? Is, if any?
Not much.
Property tax?
Continued property tax.
Okay, alright, alright. Just wanted to make sure that the, the public heard that.
We, we don't get sued, is the benefit.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, he's the attorney, not you. You know, I'm saying that with a smile on my face, right?
I'm just saying.
Alright.
Well, just to clarify, we've already been sued, and, and that case got dismissed. Um, so, I suppose they could always find a new cause of action, but, but, but any legal disputes, um, have been settled.
Right, alright, councilmember Rick?
Move to approve Resolution twenty-four dash zero two four.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Councilmember Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any further deliberation from the council? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven, yes, motion carried.
Okay, that takes us on to item ten, City Council Agenda Requests. Are there any city council members who have an agenda request tonight? Please just turn your light on. We did have a request from Troy earlier, uh, that I would like to address at this time. So I had brought up, um, seeing about that, uh, the needle exchange, and Pueblo did pass a law, and, um, I was really interested in just having a discussion on it and seeing, you know, where you thought we, if, if it was possible, if, you know, and what the law, really understand what the law is that got passed. Is, um, does anybody just have an interest in having a discussion on that, or just kind of wait and see what happens with Pueblo, or in the big public interest, um, thing? So Councilmember Hersberg, your mics on? We have an agenda request, okay.
I would rather just wait and see what happens with the lawsuit in Pueblo before we discuss it, but just to be on the safe side. I want the court case to be resolved before we start digging in and seeing what we want to do.
Okay, right, because ours is slightly different, right? We're not telling somebody it's already existing, but does everybody kind of want to agree with Gordon, or what do you want to do?
I agree. I mean, just wait and see what happens with the City of Pueblo. I mean, I think we got a little bit of time, Troy, that, just to kind of see how that kind of pans out with them, and then as we're watching that, we can kind of maybe have discussions as it gets closer.
I think the court did put a temporary stay on, right?
I think, yeah, I believe so. Um, you know, and, and I think what I would tell you, the, the risk would be if, if the council was interested in, in this, in this idea would be, um, that, that one of these clinics or services does move into the City of Fountain, right? And then we would be in the same situation as Pueblo. And so, if we, if we didn't have, you know, if we put in this, put in this restriction in place without somebody, that it would affect, it'd certainly be safer. Um, uh, so that's kind of, I think the.
Oh, that's a good point, thank you.
The, the consideration.
Well, hearing that, now, I'm going to change my mind, sorry about that. I'd like to probably have, probably a discussion about that then, earlier rather than, rather than later, and then see what, see what the direction.
So maybe in July? Because I know everybody's wanting a short meeting next, uh, week if possible, since it's the election night, so. Yeah, okay, is everybody, are you okay with that? Okay, alright. Councilmember Hersberg?
Um, I just wanted to know if we could have just maybe a summary update for the benefit of citizens listening in on fireworks, you know, what we can and can't do, just as a reminder to folks so they can hear it, um, from us.
Yeah, for sure, uh, I'll get with Fire Chief, will come up with a, a small brief, and we'll get it out to everybody.
Okay, essentially if it leaves the ground, it's illegal in Colorado. I mean, that's the, you know, that's it, right? Yeah.
In a sense, yes.
Yeah.
We'll provide more context.
Yes, I mean, if you throw a sparkler in the air, we're not going to come after you, but. Alrighty, okay. I'm sorry? Oh, well, um, we don't do agenda requests from audience. Okay, you're more than happy to email me or get with, or with, and I'd be happy to talk to you about something. Okay, alrighty, and then, um, we don't have an executive session tonight? Alright, okay, with that, we are adjourned. I don't know.